Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our February 20th action meeting to order. And I understand we are starting with a fantastic video again.
February may be the shortest month of the year, but it was packed with exciting events and achievements across the North Penn School District. And it was a championship month as our Philadelphia Eagles soared to a Super Bowl victory. Go Birds! But that wasn't the only Super Bowl celebration in town. The North Penn High School football players participated in the annual Reading Super Bowl, visiting all 13 elementary schools to promote literacy and the love of reading. The district also hosted a Super Bowl food drive, collecting an incredible amount of canned goods for Mano on Main Street. A huge thank you to Cheryl Newbert for organizing this tradition and to all the students and staff who contributed. Of course, February is Black History Month, and our schools have been busy celebrating in many ways. North Wales students celebrate Black History Month by decorating doors with notable figures in American history. Administrators and local dignitaries have been throughout the building this month, judging. Winners will be announced at the end of the month. Domi Obrigato Educational Foundation. The foundation is making robotic magic happen at North Wales Elementary School. Through a grant, the tech club is designing and building robots, perfecting their engineering and programming skills all at once. Inglewood Elementary School hosted its Mix-Up Lunch, an event encouraging students to step out of their usual social circles and connect with new classmates. Even Lansdale Mayor Gary Herbert joined in, making it a truly community-wide experience. The North Penn chorus filled the halls with harmony as they delivered singing valentines to students and staff. From sweet serenades to heartfelt harmonies, our talented vocalist shared the love while raising funds for the chorus scholarship program. Twenty plus seven equals twenty-seven. That's the number of North Penn middle school students who competed at the Valley Forge Regional Math Counts Competition on February 8th against over 160 students from Montgomery County. Pembroke, Pendale, and Penfield each had students placed in the top 25%. Congratulations to our middle school students and coaches who worked so hard for this event. Students continue to give back to our community. North Penn High School students in the Sharing Excess Club will be holding a free food distribution at North Penn High School on Saturday, February 22nd, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the senior cafeteria. The community is invited to attend this event and receive free produce and non-perishable goods. There are no questions asked when receiving food donations and no requirements to receive food. Did you catch the latest community conversations with Superintendent Dr. Bauer? The discussion featured kindergarten parent Katie Wireman, teacher Christina Bordichak, and Dr. Mike McKenna as they shared insights on kindergarten registration and tips to help parents and students prepare for that exciting big first day of school. The North Penn High School thespian troupe is hosting its 26th Annual Night for Broadway Cares fundraiser and showcase Friday, February 21st at 7:00 p.m. in the North Penn High School auditorium. Since 1999, this event has raised over $112,000 for Broadway Cares. Admission is free, but donations are encouraged. Next Thursday, come out for the 5th Annual North Penn School District Black History Oratorical Competition, featuring students from elementary school to high school. The Black History Oratorical Competition takes place in the North Penn High School auditorium and starts at 6:00 p.m. Our talented middle school students are getting ready to shine for their spring musicals. See The Little Mermaid at Penfield Middle School from February 28th to March 2nd. Pembroke Middle School is performing the SpongeBob Musical from March 6th through 8th, and Pendale Middle School is performing Newsies from March 7th through 9th. Don't miss out on a chance to see the hard work of the cast, crew, orchestra, and staff involved in these three amazing productions. That's a wrap for this North Penn news update. For more stories and more, visit youtube.com/NPTV. Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for Community Cable Channels and streamed live. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board state their name and municipality. Members of the audience will limit their questions and comments to three minutes. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of our Country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. First, before we begin, I do want to make a quick announcement. We actually changed the Wi-Fi server here at the ESC just this week. And Bob just texted me from the truck that we are having issues with our YouTube feed. The meeting is being recorded and will be posted to YouTube after the fact, but it is not currently streaming live on YouTube. So, not sure if we'll get that fixed or not. Certainly not a Sunshine Law violation. We're not required to stream our meetings, but people are used to these meetings being streamed, and it is not currently being streamed. So, with that said, as part of our Student Spotlight series, if you will, it gives me great pleasure to introduce this evening Ms. Sue Aheart, who is a BCBA, which stands for Board Certified Behavior Analyst at North Penn High School. She is here tonight as one of the coaches of our Unified Bachi team. Good evening, Ms. Aheart.
Yes, thank you for hosting us tonight. I'm Sue Aheart, and I coach our Unified Bachi team along with my assistant coach, Andrea Dash, who is hiding there. We have four speakers, students who volunteered to speak with you tonight to tell you about the team, so I will let them speak for themselves. So, first up, I have Alex Reddy.
Good evening. My name's Alex Reddy. This is my first year on the Bachi team. I made a lot of new friends at Bachi this year. You should know that Ms. Aheart and Ms. Dash are the best coaches. They care about and help all the players. I play on Team Columbia. My team finished our season with seven wins and just one loss. We made it to playoffs, which we played on Monday, February 24th, 3 o'clock, at North Penn High School in the Navy Gym. I invite everyone to come out and cheer us on. It'll be a fun time, and hopefully you get to see us win. Thank you.
Next up, we have Alana.
Good evening. My name is Alana Tomkowitz. This is my first year on the Bachi team. I played on Team Lancers on JV. This year, we had 57 students on our Bachi team, which made up two varsity teams and four JV teams. Our varsity teams competed against other schools in our area, and our JV teams had inter-team tournaments and a faculty competition. Our JV teams don't have any other teams to compete against because no other school in our area has teams as big as ours. My favorite part about Bachi was the friendships made and the interactions with new teammates I had this season. Next up is Sabir.
Good evening. My name is Sabir Amadi, and this is also my first year on the Bachi team. I played on Team Armor. Bachi is a unified sport, and unified sports are organized by Special Olympics. Unified sports, like Bachi, bring together students of all abilities, showing everyone has a place on the team. In Bachi, we have learned to support each other, celebrate our differences, and work together as one. This spirit of inclusion extends beyond sports and is what makes our school community so special. With our large and diverse student body, we prove that when we come together, we can create a welcome and supportive environment for everyone. On our Bachi team, I've seen firsthand how much of a difference inclusion makes. For example, when we practice together, we learn from each other's strengths and support each other's challenges. This not only improves our game, but also builds lasting friendships and memories. North Penn is a place where everyone belongs, and our Bachi teams are a perfect showcase for that. That's all I have for you.
Next up is Emily.
Hi, good evening. My name is Emily Kralik, and I'm a junior at North Penn High School. This year was my first year on the Bachi team, and I was on Team Swords. And I would definitely say the best part of Unified Bachi is the friendships that I made. This year, I met kids that I normally wouldn't interact with, but being a part of the Bachi team has allowed me to see them and make meaningful connections. And seeing my teammates around the hallways, and always, when I see them around the hallways, I always make sure to say hi and ask them how their day was. And seeing them in the hallways and making that connection with them definitely makes my day better. And, I don't know, it's just always another person I can talk to in the hallway, and it makes me feel at home at North Penn.
Thank you again for hosting us. And as Alex mentioned, we do have one of our six teams, Bachi teams, that did qualify for districts. They did finish first in our region, and so they will face off on Monday. So, you are all welcome, including community, to come and cheer us on 3 o'clock in the Navy Gym on Monday.
3 o'clock.
3 o'clock Navy Gym. I just sent all board directors an invite, so if you can make it, please join us.
We love to have fans in the stands, so we love to know that, and we agreed to host knowing that when we hear the cheers, that it is from our side, so.
That's right.
Home field advantage.
Ms. Aheart, Ms. Dash, thank you so much for your efforts with the students and to the kids. Thank you so much for all that you shared tonight. If you are willing to come forward, give some fist bumps or some handshakes, just to thank you for your efforts, and we're really proud of you. You represent all the good that is here in North Penn, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and at this point, I typically say, so that the parents and their family members and the kids don't feel awkward, please feel free to get up, leave the meeting. We'll take a few seconds, and then we'll move on with the agenda.
All right. Next up on our agenda is Audience of Citizens. Oh, that's right. Good evening, Mr. Patchell.
Now, wait a second. Don't start it. I need time. I gotta put this down, policy and procedure.
Mr. Patchell, I did just get word that we are live on YouTube, so.
We have what?
We are live on YouTube, so we're ready for it.
Oh, hey, that's excellent. They probably anticipated my oratory skills and wanted to get in on it. Okay, we're off. Okay, my name is William Patchell, P-A-T-C-H-E-L, and I live in Montgomery Township. And that other lovely lady at the end is sitting next to Tina Stoll, is also a resident of Montgomery Township, and I am very happy here. I believe we're rated number 57 in each, and I'm so glad because my house is going up a considerable amount. Of course, no one can buy it because they have 40-year mortgages now to accomplish, you know, what few can do now. So, anyway, oh yeah, about Bachi? Oh, maybe we need a curling team. Oh, they're all over learning hairdressing. A curling team? Okay, I'll move on. Okay, I talked to Mr. Slaughter over here, and I supplied some information. I wanted to talk him about the TPA industry and TRPCO. And I said, you know, they have litigation. Oh, TPA? That's Tri-Polymer Alloy. We didn't get a lot of that last meeting and to vote on this stuff. So, I said, gee, do you know about the litigation from Bell Vernon Area High School? Well, Mr. Slaughter said, well, yeah, yeah, you know, the bust, it blew off, knocked a building over. So, they're very unhappy there. So, there should not be any selection of a place, any provider, any contractor. If you have current litigation going on, there's a cease and desist because I want to see how this works out. This thing's got to last for 30 years. I don't know about the warranty. Maybe a third-party administrator will take care of that, you know, lost in the fog of, you know, back and forth on FedEx letters. Okay, I'll check out. Oh, 118. I got tons of time. Okay, here's the thing. The Doge, D-O-G-E, rips apart $373 million of decolonizing curriculum. Ah, that sounds pretty complicated, but it sounds like. And Craig Trainer sent a letter to all 50 states of education. You have 14 days to remove all DEI programs in the public. I'm sure that Mr. Summers is going to get a copy of that, and we're going to institute that in 14 days as the federal government. Now, I was listening to that nutritional thing. We got 40% of our money on a nutritional program for the federal government? I tell you, they're going to knock out the Federal Department of Education, and they're going to tell Governor Shapiro, hey, do it yourself. TSA? No, we're not paying for it anymore. Get Philadelphia to do it. You haven't seen anything yet. I'm telling you, we're just in the Phase 1 of this whole program. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell. Does anyone else want to make public comment this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Maine from Towmanston. After months of investigations, to my knowledge, the summary of the Pembroke investigation was only discussed at a Safe Schools Committee meeting on Zoom and was never fully presented to the full board or open public comment. Given the seriousness of the incident and the district's stated commitment to full transparency and providing information to the public, I am asking, will the summary of the findings of the investigation be brought to the full board in a public meeting? Or is this issue now considered resolved? The other thing I came here for tonight, which I think is important and everyone should agree on, is the responsibility of the board to uphold the values and respect and accountability and safety for both in our schools and the bordering community. We recently experienced a horrific event at Pembroke that showed real consequences and harmful social media bullying behavior. During the Safe Schools Committee meeting, Mr. Summers acknowledged the danger of social media, stating, "I think that harmful effects of social media relates back to cellphone use policy. Things students are frequently doing on their cellphones is engaging in social media, and it can certainly have negative impact on our school environment. Things that are occurring outside of schools can certainly spill over into schools through social media." This board has recognized in its own policy and publicly that social media threats and bullying have serious consequences. Yet, when a school board member engages in the very same behavior we condemn in students, there is no accountability. When an elected official of this board publicly states on social media, "I am part of a group you don't want to F with," it is threatening, divisive, and a direct violation of the district's own policy against bullying. If a student had made a similar statement online, it would not be excused or ignored. North Penn's Bullying Policy 5115 states, "The school district will not tolerate any acts of bullying occurring in the schools or outside a school setting. That is likely to have an effect, creating a threatening environment." The same standard must apply to the school board members. By excusing, defending, and refusing to address this behavior, the school board is sending a dangerous message that bullying is only unacceptable when it comes to our students, but when done by an adult in power, it's overlooked. I am asking you each of you directly, do you condemn these politically charged aggressive threats from your school board colleague and members of your party? Will the North Penn School District take immediate action to ensure that these types of threats are not tolerated among the board, administration, or staff moving forward? If this board truly values student safety and anti-bullying efforts, I am urging you to issue a public statement condemning this behavior and affirming that bullying by any individual at any level will not be tolerated in North Penn School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maine. Good evening, Mr. Lanier.
Good evening. Jason Lanier Lansdale. Yeah, I'd echo that. I mean, I know you guys at Towmanston just ran a board member out or whatever they are that were there because supposedly they gave a Nazi salute or something like that. I think maybe you should step on your bowling ball and resign. I mean, there's no need for that. I wanted to actually go back to what we had last, the meeting, virtual meeting, financial meeting, and the SNS got up and talked about their $5 million in excess revenue. And one of the ways they were going to go and try to alleviate some of that excess revenue is to supply lunches in the summertime to anybody who's under 18 years old. And this is an altruistic act by the school district that isn't in your charter. You are not to be doing this, yet you're going to do it because it's the right thing to do supposedly? Altruism is not when you give other people's money away to do something that you want to do. That's the public's money. It's not your money. You're not supposed to be doing these sort of things. And that leads to other programs that get expanded beyond their initial call. We have the Healthcare Center, which I've gone back and forth with Mr. Rocky about. He made a commitment to me at one point in saying, this is never going to be used for student services. Now, I know that he's moving along. Is the board going to keep to that, or are they going to try to rope it in and have students go use the Healthcare Center? I'm wondering. And maybe you could make that commitment to everybody at the end of my comment here. And I did also wanted to touch a little bit on what Ms. Patchell was saying. DEI is not allowed, and it's not allowed in the employment of your online employment portal. And I've asked numerous times what it means to, it's a requisite skill, is the ability to support a cultural of diversity, equity, and inclusion. What does that mean? How does one judge whether or not they meet that ability? And why is it, why is it that it's not for every position, just some positions? If it's that important and it has nothing to do with a political agenda, then why isn't it for every position? You know what position it isn't for? School bus driver. Why is it? Why is there no need to be supportive of diversity, equity, and inclusion if you're a school bus driver? I guess I could probably guess, and that's because they're hard to come by. And you don't want to make an incumbent upon some nonsense to try to find another school bus driver. So, why is it? Why is it selective? What is the benefit? What does it mean to be supportive of a diversity, equity, culture of diversity, equity, and inclusion? What does that mean? And more accurately, when are you going to rip this out of the agenda here, the political agenda which is tied into school policy? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lanier. Would anyone else like to make public comment this evening? Good evening, Mrs. Burke.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Burke from Lansdale Borough. I'm concerned about efforts to do away with programs supporting diversity, equity, and inclusion. I know local entities like school boards are being pressured to end these initiatives, and today I'd like to focus on what inclusive programs in our school district have meant to my family. My child has various disabilities, physical and otherwise, and is currently a post-12 student in the district. In 2010, Republicans controlled the school board, and their main priority when it came to students with special needs seemed to be minimizing costs. The experience was atrocious. That year, all the kindergarten students with special needs from all of our 13 elementary schools were taken from their home schools and placed at Gwinnor. One bus was provided for all of them. It took over an hour to get back and forth from Upper Gwinnett to Gwinnor. These students were split between the two kindergarten classes there. So, there was around eight students per class, and they were grouped together in the back with a single shared aide to save money. The teachers were not aware they would be getting these students, and they were certainly not ready for them. I remember being told at back-to-school night that I would have to ask the aide how my student was progressing because it was up to the aide. Mind you, these were not co-teachers, just aides, to teach them. That's also when I realized that my child, who had fought hard to learn to walk with crutches, spent the entire day sitting in or being pushed around in a desk with wheels because the classroom setup did not provide enough room for navigation with the crutches or the walker we had provided. I could go on. It was so unworkable that eventually in 2011, we moved our family out of the country, where we found a school that would provide the support needed to include our child with disabilities. I appreciate that our school board has changed from a group that only works to minimize the cost of education to a group with a mindset to provide meaningful education for all of our students and who understand that for people with disabilities to be meaningfully included in society, they require programs to support their educational and employment needs. For my child, this has meant a placement with Project Search BACS, an educational and job training program for students with special needs, where my student has been doing internships with various departments within the BACS County Government. Here's my student going about the workday and posing happily with a BACS County judge. My child now walks without assistance, had an internship with a Pennsylvania State Representative, met the Speaker of the Pennsylvania House and a U.S. Vice President, and can name most of the members of the Pennsylvania State House as well as the U.S. Congress. I propose for all of your consideration that these things would not have happened to a student who remained in the back of the room, trapped in a desk with wheels.
Mrs. Burke, thank you.
Inclusion programs work. Please don't abandon them or our students who need them.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment this evening?
Okay. Can I make a quick comment?
Certainly.
Thank you. Mrs. Burke, I just, as an educator, as a mother, I was really touched by your story. I had not heard it before, and it's a reminder for me of why what we do sitting here is so important for all of our students to have these opportunities. You should be so proud as a mother. I know you are, I could hear it in your voice, but I just wanted you to know that you took your time to come out this evening, and when someone comes to the microphone and is talking about students and their own child with such passion, and we know that we have the ability to make decisions that can impact their future, it just, it's really touching, and I appreciate you sharing your story this evening. And a reminder for all of us, my colleagues, of what we do and how important it is, the decisions that we make. And congratulations. Sounds like you have a wonderful child. I'll be proud for facing you there. Thank you.
And just to briefly expand on that, we saw tonight Unified Bachi, right? And, you know, we continually entertain comments about the necessary, why is DEI, why is diversity, equity, and inclusion necessary? It's not a laundry list of things that we say, we're going to be equitable here, we don't need to worry about it there. It's a lens that we expect the district to apply to all things that we do, right? And it was a beautiful example of that this evening when we saw what inclusion looks like in extracurricular activities. So, I would hold that up as a model for those who would question the need for it. Beyond that, I would also just like to take a moment and briefly address these comments that have been out in the community for a couple weeks. Accusations from North Penn United Political Action Committee insinuating an act of bullying. I would say that my friends at North Penn United Political Action Committee are confusing bullying with standing up to bullying. The comment in question was in reference to a multi-billion-dollar corporation that tried to enact a hostile takeover of Towmanston's municipal sewer system. Our Board of Directors at the time had decided against the public's wishes to sign on into a contract with First Next Era and then eventually American Water. And the people that I'm referring to in that cherry-picked line are the people of Towmanston themselves, not just the people of Towmanston Neighbors opposed to privatization efforts, and not just the Towmanston Democratic Association, but all the people. The people who came out to Christopher Dock by the hundreds on a Wednesday night to tell our supervisors not to sell that sewer, the people that continued to come to meetings on Wednesdays and give public comment to urge our board, our supervisors, to not sell, the people who came out to vote to change our township charter to a home rule charter and put a provision in there to prevent the sale from being legal, the people who organized, the people who knocked doors, the people who fundraised, the people who sued the township to stop that sale from going through. All right? The people that I'm talking about set an example for those who would be bullied that a small township... a small township can, and in fact, did defeat, a multi-billion-dollar corporation that attempted to buy our sewer system. So I think there's a valuable lesson for those who do feel marginalized or bullied, and that's that you should find the strength inside to stand up for yourself. You should be able to have the strength of your convictions and not be afraid to back down. And I think Talmansen set that example for people. And my fiery language in a statement that I made on my personal Facebook page simply exuded the excitement I have to be a part of that community, to be a part of that community that not only stood up to American Water, but also stood up to a supervisor who thought that it was a good idea to flash a Nazi salute to, quote, "stir the pot." They drew the line at American Water, they drew the line at that supervisor, and I am proud to stand by them. And I think that it sets an actual good example for people to see that when you find it within yourself, to find the strength, and you know that you have right on your side, you should find your voice and you should use your voice. And so in regard to anybody behind this table, these are the hardest-working, most dedicated group of volunteers I've ever met. They will meet anyone, anywhere, and listen to you if you have a genuine concern. They have proven it time and again. These folks should not be, it should not be conflated, what I said, with this group. I'm proud to serve at them. I'm proud to be in Talmansen. And that's all I have to say about that. So, thank you. Move on.
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I have a comment on a different issue. Please. I'm sorry, but I defer. I just want to make sure I have a statement. And I want to get Mr. Patchell's question answered. Okay. Mr. Scrocky, I just want to make sure that the point that was raised with TPA and the contractor, having gone through enough of these bids, but I'm still not a lawyer, so it might be Mr. Summers' aspect. But could you just explain for the board and the community lowest responsible bid? And that it's not as easy as it sounds to just reject these bids? As far as my knowledge, that's a state law, that we have to accept this?
Well, first, I'd like to say that the contractors being recommended tonight for the bid award for the first phase of the high school project, we have experience with all those contractors, and they're excellent contractors. In terms of lowest responsible bidder, we're required by law to take the lowest responsible bidder. And to do otherwise is pretty much a pathway to a lawsuit, which would delay the project. It could be by a month, it could be by a year. But there's very few narrow reasons that would allow us to reject the lowest responsible bidder. And Mr. Summers can chime in on that. But I really feel that, especially when you're dealing with construction contracts, to go to just say, oh, well, thank you for your lowest bid, we're not going to use you, we're going to use another contractor, again, is a pathway to a lawsuit.
Thank you. That helps.
Just for clarification, Mr. Patchell's comments were specific to, I guess, signing a contract with a particular entity that was in litigation or some type of suit against them. So when we, when you all review bidders, and they may be the lowest bidder, if you did research to determine that there was litigation pending against them, they are not considered a responsible bidder. Is that correct?
No, that's debatable. And that's where I'll defer to Mr. Summers. But that is very debatable, because even if they've had a past history of litigation, even if they are involved in current litigation, that is not necessarily a reason to reject their bid unless there was some sort of prequalification where that was part of the specifications.
Yeah, and just to add to that, certainly, the litigation history of a particular bidder could be a factor that's taken into consideration. But I think as has been seen throughout this process, the district has a comprehensive team of both its own employees and hired consultants who provide advice and recommendations on whether a particular bidder is responsible or not. And I think there's a high level of confidence in certainly the bidders that are being recommended tonight.
I appreciate that. And that's what I've always appreciated with this service on the board, is the ability for us to speak with facts and see what precedent is and not jump to conclusions. I do think that's a very good example that we would hold our students to a higher standard when it comes down, speaking as one board director from community members who take things out of context and make false equivocation and false narratives. We would never accept that from our students. And I think the adults in the community can set a better example as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we'll continue on with our agenda this evening. Next up will be approval of the meeting minutes.
Do you want to make public comment? I didn't hear a motion. You don't?
No, no, we just continue with the agenda. So next up again will be the approval of our meeting minutes from our January 23rd and February 11th meetings. May I please have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Are there any comments or questions regarding either set of minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you. Next, we'll move into the committee reports. And the committee reports, all of these committee reports, is it correct to say A? Oh, no.
A through F.
A through F, pardon me, are posted on the North Penn website. However, we will move into G, which is the North Bonco Technical Career Center, and that would be Mr. Rush.
There's no report tonight. We did meet last night, and there was no time to get the report into the meeting minutes. So we will talk about it at next meeting.
Great. All right. Thank you, Mr. Rush. And then next will be Mrs. Romick for the intermediate unit, pardon, intermediate unit and the North Penn Educational Foundation. Thank you all.
Great. I'll start with the MCIU. The MCIU board met last on January 22nd. We started our meeting off with a program highlight featuring a little bit about the work of the IU in supporting information technology services. The board approved reading of policies, various grant budgets and contracts. And the next MCIU Head Start Policy Council will be held on February 19th. And the next MCIU board meeting is scheduled for the 26th. I also want to just share that there is a Montgomery County Annual Education Resource, I'm sorry, a recruitment fair also scheduled for March 3rd. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Romick. I'm sorry. And next up is the legislative report.
I'm sorry, I'll move on to the North Penn.
Oh, shucks. All right.
Move on to the North Penn Educational Foundation. I'm sorry, I paused. The foundation is busy working with teachers on implementing 30 mid-year grants totaling more than $44,000 that were approved in November. Nine of these grants worth about $23,000 are considered EITC programs. EITC does not stand for, in this case, the Earned Income Tax Credit, but does stand for Educational Improvement Tax Credit. EITC is a Pennsylvania initiative that provides tax credits to businesses and individuals that donate to eligible educational organizations, including the North Penn School District Educational Foundation. Through the program, eligible businesses can receive a 75% tax credit for a one-year commitment or a 90% tax credit for a two-year commitment. Individual participants can also benefit from tax credits, and is something one could talk about with their accountant. Funds generated through this program support innovative public school programs that enhance education. These programs must be approved by the state. The foundation has the following EITC programs approved. Course Advancement, STEM at Secondary Schools, North Penn TV, thank you to our students who are here with us supporting this meeting, the North Penn High School Planetarium, the North Penn High School Marine Biology and Technical Theater. In addition, there are two programs currently being reviewed by the state for approval. One is to enhance environmental education, and the other is to help fund field trips throughout our schools. Some examples of what EITC has funded include the spatial computing programs at the high school, the new projector in our planetarium. These big-ticket items are possible because of EITC contributions. I want to thank this year's EITC generous donors, CNN Bank, First Citizens Community Bank, Hatboro Federal Savings, Mid-Penn Bank, Quakertown National Bank, Unives Financial, Waste Management, Weiss Markets, and Meridian Bank. Their combined contributions total more than $75,000. Any questions related to the EITC program or the foundation can be directed to Christine LeBaroski at the ESC, or you can learn more at npennfoundation.org. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Romick. And now legislative report. Mr. McBain.
Thank you very much. I have no report beyond to say that anyone with questions about how federal funding finds its way to North Penn, they can check out our last in-person finance meeting of February 11th, in which a gentleman named Mr. Trump unrelated went through the details for us and gave us all that we need to know. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McBain. Mr. Summers?
Thank you, Madam President. For my report this evening, it's just to announce that the board did meet in an executive session immediately prior to tonight's meeting for the purpose of discussing a matter of labor relations involving the district administrator group, confidential student matter, and a matter of personnel involving an appointed administrator of the district. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Dr. Bauer?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. So I will start with the consent agenda. I recommend the items listed A through L, namely adoption of policies for a first read, approval of bid for the MPHS audio console, approval of bid for the MPHS intercom, approval to advertise for bid, student travel, contracts, gifts to the district, student agreements and hearing waivers, student agreements, Inglewood Elementary School Plan Con J audit, Hatfield Elementary School Plan Con J audit, and Culp Elementary School Plan Con J audit.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer. So I please have a motion to approve Agenda Item 6A through 6L.
Second.
Who is the second, please?
Mr. Fusco.
All right, thank you.
And just now that I'm sure you're taking comments or questions, it is of note, Mr. Slaughter did go through these high school items in the last FNO meeting, and they are all transferable post-renovation.
Dr. Bauer knows that I would make that comment. And actually, I will make that comment for the next two years. All right, thank you so much. All right. Any other comments or questions? All right. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you.
I recommend approval of the personnel items as per the attached.
May I have a motion for personnel, please?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, so motion passes.
Next, I recommend approval of the 2025-2026 North Penn School District calendar.
May I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions on the calendar?
Ms. McMurtry, I do want to say that we will, so what the board is approving tonight is the start of school, the end of school, and the days off, the number of days, all those things. The early dismissal days are on there. Once all of that is finalized, we will send this out to our community that we did find a discrepancy with one early dismissal day, that it happens to be the first day of a new marking period, which isn't great. So we're going to adjust that early dismissal day. But the start, the end, and the days off are all correct. That's what you're voting on tonight.
Thank you for that clarification, Dr. Bauer. All right. With that, any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. I recommend the awarding of bids to the contractors listed below and attached for the amounts stated and entering into contracts for the North Penn High School construction/renovation project. Funding for the project will come from the North Penn High School Construction Fund.
All right. May I please have a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
I knew it.
There's probably going to be a third or fourth and a fifth if we could have it. All right. Any comments or questions? I'm just going to say thank you to everyone. Thank you to our new Director of Facilities for coming on board and making this happen, being part of the team, Mr. Slaughter. I'm thrilled and looking forward to it. So thank you all. All right. Any other comments or questions? I'm done gushing. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. Next, I recommend issuing the notice to proceed to the contractors listed below and attached for the North Penn High School construction/renovation project.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the notice to proceed?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All right. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Next, the next three items are amendments to contracts based upon processes with the Planning Commission and with the township. So the first item, Item E, is I recommend approval to amend the North Penn High School Transportation Center existing features contract with Cowan Associates Incorporated, the contract by an additional $8,200 for additional services for tree surveys on the WMPV site incurred during the course of the contract.
Okay. May I have a motion to amend the North Penn Transportation Center contract?
So moved.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? I have one question, and I don't know if Mr. Slaughter can answer this. Is this something that we can anticipate in Phase Two, the next phases of this project, or just this initial one?
This is for design as part of Phase Two. So this is the only place where we will incur tree removal. So this should be the only time we see that.
Thanks, Mr. Slaughter. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. Next, I recommend approval to amend the North Penn High School Transportation Center existing features contract with Cowan Associates Incorporated, the contract by an additional $7,182.04 for additional services for feature surveys incurred during the course of the contract.
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
And the last of these amendments, I recommend approval of a contract with Horner and Cantor Associates to survey and provide a pedestrian report, as requested by the Talmansen Township, for a potential pedestrian crossing in the amount of $4,500. And just for clarity, this is right there at Bridle Path, kind of across from Crawford Stadium and Somebodytown Pike, that cross there.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer.
So moved.
So moved?
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions? All right. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to ask Mr. Summers, is it okay if another member of the superintendent's cabinet makes a recommendation?
Sure.
All right. Mr. Scrocky, going to ask you, since this is your final action meeting, can you please make this recommendation to?
I love it. Thank you very much. I recommend approval of the attached resolution for a real estate tax rebate program for qualified homeowners and renters for the 25-26 fiscal year, and the resolution is attached.
Thank you, Mr. Scrocky. Is there?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any comments or questions?
I would just point to a fruitful conversation about this resolution in the last finance meeting. And, Mr. Scrocky, you will leave behind quite a legacy, but this is the award-winning tax rebate program that I hope will endure for a very long time in North Penn School District. So thank you.
And we will hopefully hear from your favorite person that sends you that thank-you note every year, that we have truly enjoyed you bringing to these meetings and reading to us. It really is something that makes it very personal, and we appreciate it. Any other comments or questions? All right. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you.
I recommend approval of the 2025-26 Montgomery County Intermediate Unit budget. North Penn's share of that budget is $218,592. I believe, Mr. Scrocky, this represents a 4% increase from last year.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. May I please have a motion for the intermediate unit budget?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any comments or questions? All righty. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
And finally, I recommend ratification of the submission of the delinquent real estate tax and interim taxes to the Montgomery and Bucks County Tax Claim bureaus as per the attached.
Okay. All right. May I have a motion for the delinquent real estate taxes, please?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any comments or questions? All right. Mr. Scrocky, I have one. I know this is a subject that we have talked about many times during meetings, so looking ahead, do you anticipate, what do you anticipate? It's a loaded question, you're leaving.
Christ of all time, right? So, I mean, I was a little disappointed this year with the collection because our outstanding properties increased by $363,000 in terms of outstanding taxes. So clearly it was more corporate properties, industrial properties, because we actually saw a reduction in the number of properties, but an increase in terms of the value that was turned over for delinquent collection. So, $363,000 is more than what we would like, but we continue to work with our tax collectors to find outreach measures that we can take to try to keep that number as low as possible.
And that will continue. Okay, all right, great. All right, any other comments or questions? All righty, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
And that concludes the Superintendent's Report. I'll turn it over to our CFO, Mr. Scrocky, for the Finance Report.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm happy to deliver my last Treasures Report, North Penn School Board. This is for the meeting, of course, of February 20th, 2025. This is the 1,162nd meeting of the Board of Directors of North Penn School District. I mentioned about the Governor's Budget Proposal at the Finance Meeting, but I think it bears repeating. The Governor Shapiro delivered his 25-26 Budget Address on February 4th. What's being proposed next year for North Penn School District is a 1.86% increase in the basic education funding. That is $346,365. That falls far short from what we received for an increase this fiscal year. This fiscal year, we saw a 10.8% increase of $1.8 million. So, 1.86% next year, $346,000 is what's being proposed. For Special Education, our subsidy would increase by 3.11%. That's a $242,000 increase. Again, that is about half of the increase that we saw this fiscal year. What is of particular interest to me is, once again, the Governor is recommending a flat cyber charter tuition rate of $8,000 per student. That would be statewide. And that would have an incredible impact here at North Penn School District, would save our taxpayers $2.2 million. Statewide, it would deliver approximately $278 million in savings, just based on that one little change. It's been proposed many times in the past and it's never been enacted upon. North Penn, right now, this year is receiving $390,000 in cyber transition funds, however, there's no funding in next year's proposed budget from the Governor. Interesting timing, because just today, this afternoon, in fact, the Pennsylvania Auditor General issued the results of a performance audit of five cyber schools. And I'd like to read a couple excerpts from Auditor General De For's report. He reported at a three-year period, 2020 to 23, these five cyber schools increased their reserves by 144%, due in part to an outdated funding formula that does not use actual instruction costs to determine tuition, does not set guidelines for spending or set limits for cyber charter school reserves. Now, keep in mind that cyber schools are supposed to be public schools, right? Charter schools are public schools. Here at North Penn School District, as well as the other 499 traditional public schools, we have a cap on our fund balance of 8% of unassigned funds. There's no cap for charter schools, and some of the schools have seen massive increases over the past couple of years. By the way, the five cyber schools referenced in the report are Commonwealth Charter Academy, that's the largest cyber school in Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania Leadership Charter School, Insight PA Cyber Charter School, Pennsylvania Cyber Charter School and the Reach Cyber Charter School. The Auditor General also mentioned that "I am now the third AG to look at this issue and the third one to reach the same conclusion. Cyber charter funding formula needs to change to reflect what is actually being spent to educate students and set reasonable limits on the amount of money these schools can keep in reserves." It almost sounds like a quote from Steve Scrocky for like the last, what, five years, six years, seven years? Let's see, what else can I share with you? The AG found instances of the cyber charter schools using taxpayer dollars on things like staff bonuses, gift cards, vehicle payments and fuel stipends. He left out parade floats at the Philadelphia Thanksgiving Day Parade sponsored by Commonwealth Charter Academy. But nonetheless, Commonwealth Charter Academy, led by CEO Tommy Longenhacker, has spent $196 million, $196 million for a cyber school to purchase or renovate 21 buildings. So what does a cyber school need 21 buildings for? And this is our money, these are Pennsylvania taxpayer dollars. I mean, I'd like to partner with Mr. Patchell to start issuing vexatious write-to-no requests to Commonwealth Charter Academy to get to the bottom of this issue. I really want to do that. Anyway, the tuition rate is determined by the funding formula that was developed in 2002 that bases the rate on each student's education, not the amount spent on education. So the AG said, let me put this into perspective for you. In 2002, we were still using dial-up access to the internet, floppy disk were the best way to store data and the iPhone and iPad were not invented. So kudos to the Auditor General for making these recommendations and recognizing what I term as the fleecing of the taxpayers in Pennsylvania. And I think it, looking at $196 million spent for buildings when you provide cyber education is really the epitome of that fleecing. So, thank you for listening to me for my last rant about cyber schools and my tenure here at North Penn School District.
It was a pleasure.
Mr. Scrocky, just a point of clarification on that, too. And thank you for pointing out the Auditor Generals, right, the last three years, so that's bipartisan efforts that we've seen, different parties. It proves the point that our State House needs to get on the same page as well, right? Everyone across the Commonwealth wants this. Is this some, I mean, I've heard it mentioned before, but when you hear numbers like that, I mean, does the Auditor General say that this is legal theft?
In so many words, he did, he was very careful with his wording, because he mentioned about the gift cards and the phones and things like that, that it is legal. He wasn't accusing anyone of any inappropriate behavior, but, I mean, that really begs the question and, you know, we need to get to the issue that something needs to change, there needs to be reform, simply needs to be reform. But he did classify three times in his press release, legal, legal, legal. He said that each time, he was very careful.
And it amazes me, thank you, that context is fantastic for the community. And those who aren't here but like to speak about children in need getting meals in our community, but they don't speak about this week after week after week in our meetings, tells me more about them than the School Board of this district. Thank you.
Well, Dr. Bauer, today interviewed with PSBA, and one of the questions was, what are your three biggest challenges facing the district from a financial standpoint? And I share with Dr. Bauer, from my perspective, it is, not that we're spending, you know, we spend less than 5% of our budget on charter schools, but it's the fleecing that comes with it. When it costs $6,000 to $7,000 to educate a student with cyber education and we're paying $16,000, there should be an absolute outcry. $10,000 approximate differential per student, and we're talking about we shouldn't feed kids over the summer, that would otherwise go hungry? I mean, that's just inconscionable.
I can I just make a comment, too? Like, I would think that three attorneys general have found, made these findings, and I believe with the PSBA, I think they had like 475 out of the 500 school districts have issued a resolution for charter school reform. I am just wondering what the State House is doing. You know, like if that many people on both sides of the aisle, you know, and the school districts are rural, suburban, urban, all asking for charter school reform, what are they waiting for?
I would say three words in response to that, Mrs. Stoll. Follow the money.
Yep.
So, a couple additional updates. Again, I've reported on this at the Finance Committee meeting, but in case anyone from the public missed it and what, I provided a Movie Lots update, the sale of our movie lots. I did mention that we did receive court approval now to move forward with the sale of the movie lots. There was a Second Amendment to extend the due diligence period with Pulte that ends on March 3rd. We've been informed by Pulte that they have no plans to request an additional extension. Once that due diligence period ends, then there's an amount of money that needs to be put in escrow to continue the next stop, the next step, I should say, in the sales agreement. Also, to provide the Board an update, I did have a bond rating call with Moody's yesterday. My opinion is it went pretty well. We'll hear the results of that meeting probably in about two to three weeks. So, as we move forward with the process of issuing the $10 million for the first phase of the high school project, we'll find out what that bond rating is. Just a reminder, we are double A1 rated. There's very few school districts in Pennsylvania that have a double A1 or higher rating. So, our ask was a triple A rating at that meeting, and I think more realistically, we'll be quite pleased if we're able to maintain our double A1 rating. And thank you to the Board for the tax rebate resolution. So for the community, our rebate next year will be 80% of the state amount, an increase from the current year, 60%. Next year will be the eighth year of the tax rebate program. So, thank you to the Board for continuing to support that program. So in terms of the financial report, the Treasures Report is for the month of January 2025. We had cash receipts in January totaling 5.2 million. Our dispersments were 28.3 million, and we had available funds at the end of the month of 200, I'm sorry, 200.1 million. And that's about a $21 million increase over the same period last year. Recommend approval of the Treasures Report, please.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the Treasures Report?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, I recommend ratification of dispersments for the month of January in the amount of
May I have a motion for dispersments for January, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Y'all go too fast. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Finally, for approval, I recommend approval of the attached budget transfers for the month of January in the amount of $219,635.05.
May I have a motion for budget transfers, please?
So moved.
Second was- Okay, all right, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
And finally, for information, we do have the financial reports for the month of January. And just a quick summary through seven months of the fiscal year, we are ahead of schedule on revenues for budget and we are coming in under on expenditures, so we are expecting a positive variance again at the end of this fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Scrocky.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. End of report.
All righty, thanks again.
Okay, other business? It gives me great pleasure this evening. Actually, when I was new to the school district in 2015 as high school principal, there was an Assistant Business Administrator working here under Mr. Scrocky. His name was Brian Pauling. Brian left the North Penn School District to be a business administrator in several other districts. I believe he was also president of PASBO. So Brian is the business administrator in a neighboring school district and he is here this evening to say a few words about Mr. Scrocky. So please welcome to the podium, Mr. Pauling. Brian?
Thank you very much. First, I want to thank Dr. Bauer and the Board for allowing me a few minutes tonight. I wanted to start off with a story about Steve. He's looking at me like, where is this going? So, as Dr. Bauer said, I was the Assistant Business Administrator here 11 years ago. Steve and I were at our annual PASBO conference when he was hired here at North Penn, and he had a conversation with me about applying here at the district. And, you know, I had seen Steve, you know, around and weren't close friends at that point, but he encouraged me to apply. Had my first interview, I thought it went well and it did, I got called back for a second interview. He told me, you know, we'll have a, you know, a short exam for you to take. That short exam turned out to be about 100 questions. That 100 questions just kind of epitomizes Steve and his attention to detail, his commitment to excellence and, you know, just that process of interviewing a staff member to make sure that we were up to his par just speaks to his character.
Brian, if I could interrupt you real quick. I've been in these interviews a few times with Steve and everyone takes this test. And every time I ask him how they do it, he's, oh, they failed. They just failed less than everyone else, right?
Pretty much.
So the test is apparently very rigorous. I'm sure you would agree, but-
Yes, and I'm glad he graded it on a curve.
Yes, yes, exactly.
But Steve's passion for public education, his work effort, his knowledge of school public finance is second to none. He's very well respected by his peers, not only here in southeastern PA, but across the state. You know, his commitment to innovation through the tax rebate program and other programs such as the health clinics that he's brought here to North Penn are fantastic ideas, one of which I borrowed, so thank you for the tax rebate program. We have implemented that at Radnor Township School District. The other thing that kind of illustrates how Steve is, not only as a business administrator, but as a person, is when I got hired at the Sauterton Area School District a few years ago, at the meeting where they introduce you as a new employee and they approve you for recommendation, Steve came to that meeting and just epitomizes who he is as a person and what he means to me as a friend. So, I just want to congratulate him on his retirement, thank him for his friendship, his mentorship. I'm looking forward to continue commiserating about public cyber charter school costs even after you're retired. So, thank you, Steve, and congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Brian. Now, that brought me really close to tears, I'm telling you. Thanks to everyone, I appreciate the recognition over the past couple of months. It really does mean a lot. I don't like the public recognition, but I really do appreciate it. But thank you.